Okay, we all set? Yeah, it's on consent. On consent. Adopted, okay. Okay, we are calling the 7:00 PM, a little late, public hearing to order, but there's a reason for that. Application on behalf of ZP Group LLC and 312 North Main Street LLC to rezone 312 North Main Street, a vacant lot from R-13, one-family residence district to RO residential office, and then to designate the rezoned lot as a special development district. The applicants propose to construct an approximately 3,360 square foot, two-and-one-half-story residential-style building to be used for professional office use and make associated site improvements. Roll call, Ms. LaBrow.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Ms. Casperson.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Carrigan.
Here.
Mr. Winograd.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. LaBrow. We are reading in for the record, letter dated June 21, 2016, from Attorney Robin Pearson, requesting hearing be continued. The hearing will be continued to July 26 at 5:45. And because we are continuing the hearing, there will be no public comment now, and it will take place on July 26. If you cannot make it to the July 26 date, and I'm sorry for any inconvenience, you are welcome to write, have written, correspond, and sent, and it will be part of the record. Thank you. We're closing the public hearing. Calling the council meeting to order, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Ms. LaBrow.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Ms. Casperson.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Carrigan.
Here.
Mr. Winograd.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. LaBrow. I just want to take a minute and just mention a couple of things. I went to a funeral today, Mr. Benjamin Costin, 98-year-old gentleman, who owned a business in the community, Costin, Reufkis &amp; Company, and it became Cone Resnick. He was a remarkable man. He was one of the tough hombres, a member of the tough hombres, served in the 357th Infantry, 90th Division of Patton's Third Army, fought in France and Germany in the Battle of the Bulge, and was on his way to Japan, actually, when Japan surrendered. And it was, it's always amazing to go to a funeral of one of the greatest generation and their philanthropy, their commitment to the country, their commitment to family. It's just, it's really remarkable. And I, it was a very moving ceremony, and he was one of the founding members of Bethel Synagogue, and as well as the Suburban Swim Club, which is now the JCC Swim Club. I just wanted to extend his sympathy to his wife of 74 years. He was a life well-lived. And also, in our, in the Yukon world, and actually in the Connecticut world, Yukon basketball, women's basketball, Yukon basketball, or all basketball, actually, is a religion, Yukon basketball being one of a very important part of it, and the women's team being a remarkable, beyond, you know, beyond anyone's expectations, and a real leader in the world in any sport. So, a big loss today with Pat Summitt passing away from Alzheimer's, and I just wanted to read Coach Ariema's quote on Pat Summitt. Lots of people coach the game, very few get to define it, and that was a pretty remarkable loss to the world of women's basketball. And then I just also want to just mention that the people of Turkey are in our thoughts and prayers as that horrible incident happened today at Ataturk Airport. And they're, so, as is all of the people of Europe and the world because of Brexit. We don't know what's going on, right? So, anyway, we're going to, number four, we have no minutes to approve. Number five, public forum, is there anybody signed up? Thank you, Mr. Orr. We, we do need...
Thank you.
Yeah, you need to state your name and address for the record.
Richard Orr, 30 Gublin Circle, Hartford, Connecticut, but I lived in West Hartford for 30 years. I'm here simply on behalf of the University of Connecticut Administration to say we fully support the resolution. We will, assuming that it passes tonight, we'll present it to the board tomorrow. I'm confident of passage. I want to thank the staff, particularly Mark McGovern, Kim Bonham, and the town manager, Ron Van Winkle. I won't say it was easy. Hard things and worthwhile things never are, but I will say that the town is very well-served by its staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. We were supposed to suspend the rules to allow you to speak because you don't live in West Hartford, I think, but I thought you do live in West Hartford.
I did, but I don't.
I didn't know that, okay. So, okay. We are actually, number six, we are going to move to table the reports from town manager due to some rule changes. We will get back to you in a minute. So, I make a motion that we table.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Consideration, number seven, Mr. Davidoff.
I move that we place items 13 through 17 and 21 through 27 on consent.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, Mr. Davidoff.
Item number eight is an application on behalf of ZP Group LLC and 312 North Main Street LLC to rezone 312 North Main Street, a vacant lot from R-13, one-family residence district to RO residential office, and then to designate the rezoned, the rezoned lot as a special development district. The applicants propose to construct an approximately 3,360 square foot, two-and-one-half-story residential-style building to be used for professional office use and make associated site improvements. I move we continue this to our July 23 meeting at 5:45 PM in the Legislative Chamber.
It's actually July 26.
I'm sorry, July 26, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And I'm going to actually say this now, but Mr. Van Winkle, our town manager, is away on a trip, and we have Police Chief Gove sitting in for him, and we will hear from him a little bit more later. So, number nine, Mr. Davidoff.
Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the purchase of the University of Connecticut West Hartford campus property. I move we adopt.
I am going to take my, I'm, could you, well, yeah, could you move it? You second it and you go, you know? Oh, you did already. Motion's been made and seconded. I actually am recusing myself, so I'm going to step away, and Mr. Davidoff is going to take over.
Ms. Bonham, would you like to give us some background with respect to the sale and purchase agreement?
Sure. As Attorney Orr had mentioned, we've had extensive conversations with the university working through different scenarios, and the result of those conversations have culminated in the purchase and sale agreement, which I believe you all should have received last week. I can hit the highlights of the agreement if you would like, and, okay. The agreement states that the town, should the resolution be adopted tonight, will purchase the University of Connecticut West Hartford campus for $5 million. A deposit will be made in the amount of $250,000 on the effective date of the agreement, and that effective date will be after it's signed by both parties and the Attorney General's Office has approved it. At that point, the town would pay $250,000 to Yukon, and it would have 90 days from that date to conduct its due diligence, a variety of inspections on the property. We have actually already done some inspections through Malone and McBroom over the past several months. Mr. McGovern can answer any questions that you may have specifically on that. After the 90 days is complete, that will be considered the outside diligence date, and at that point, the town would pay another $750,000 to the university. And the closing date would be on October 2, 2017, or the date that Yukon vacates the property, if that happens to be later. The town can choose to have a closing date earlier, if it would like, but the target date is October 2, 2017, at which point the town would pay the balance of $4 million to the university. And there is a clawback provision, as we've been calling it shorthand, in the purchase and sale agreement, and that would last until October 1, 2024. And as you read in the agreement, it basically envisions different scenarios of how the property might be disposed of before that date, and if that happened, how much Yukon would receive. The main points is that if the town were to sell all of the property before October 1, 2024, then Yukon would receive the difference between 90% of the sale proceeds and the amount that the town has paid to Yukon, with a minimum guaranteed to Yukon of $5 million. So if, for example, we were to sell the property on October 1, 2018 for $10 million, then Yukon would receive an additional $4 million. That consists of 90% of the $10 million, which is $9 million, less the $5 million that the town had already paid to Yukon, $4 million. There is also the potential of the town selling it off in pieces, in which case the university would receive 90% of any aggregate purchase price over $5 million. So if the town sold it off in pieces, then it would keep the first $5 million, and 90% beyond that would go to Yukon. And then finally, there's also a provision for if the, if the university, if we ended up leasing the property or portion of it. That is the highlights of the agreement. There's obviously many pages, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Mark could also answer questions about the inspections.
Thank you, Ms. Bonham. I'm going to take the prerogative to speak first and then entertain others, so this way I can make certain I see everybody who would like to speak on this. As Ms. Bonham pointed out, the deal is for $5 million, even though you may have read some media reports that had an erroneous number in the last 24 hours. And I think that's a wonderful price for this 58-acre parcel. It represents a relationship between the University of Connecticut and the town of West Hartford that I think will serve our residents in the long run very well. The key numbers, I think you pointed out this evening, was the $250,000 upon the signing, and then another $750,000 later in the year with a $4 million balance to be due within two years. I think it's also important to put on the table and to note that there are no current deals on the table between the town and any other interested parties who may wish to purchase or use the parcel. And I believe that it's the intent of the council and the town to entertain any and all proposals and to vet them thoroughly with research that would be necessary through the appropriate town department. So this evening, what this action will allow us to do would be able to control the use of the parcel, which we heard from many of our residents was very important during the public hearing we had several months ago. This is a very comprehensive agreement, which encompasses very, encompasses many different scenarios. I think it's going to be a very exciting time for our community as we move forward, and that's something that we should all look upon as something to be excited about and something that will prevent opportunities that we probably haven't even thought of as of this date. I would be remiss if I didn't compliment our town manager, even though he's abroad, for his diligence in negotiating quite fiercely in the town's best interests with the University of Connecticut and working over the obstacles that may have risen during the negotiations. And would also like to thank you, Ms. Bonham, and Mr. McGovern, and Mr. Dumey, and I think Mr. Martin and the town engineer for all your professional professionalism and for your input in making certain that the contract reflects the best interest of our town, since this is a major investment that we'll be making in the town. And I'd also like to extend a thank you to the University of Connecticut for their cooperation in recognizing that the town of West Hartford is probably the best-suited purchaser for this parcel at this time. So those are the things that I wanted to get out on the record to make certain that everyone knows clear with respect to some of the facts and the parties who were involved in this, and from there, I'll entertain other questions or commentary from my colleagues on this resolution. Minority Leader Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. And this was a little bit of a difficult decision because I think, you know, our immediate reaction was there was a buyer out there that was going to present a proposal that would have meant taxes to the town, and certainly we want to be fiscally responsible. As always, I'm always concerned about that $230 million in unfunded pension liabilities and $130, $140 million in unfunded OPEB liabilities. You know, we have to be thinking about that all the time. So when that first buyer was out there with the 12.8 million, I think, offer matching that would have been very difficult. So I, I do applaud the state and our town for coming back together and saying, there's got to be another way to move forward with this. I do believe this solution makes sense financially for the town. We will not get another opportunity to look at 54 acres in the middle of our town and say, what could we do with this? And I believe that this arrangement will give us the time to sit back and thoughtfully work through any and all alternatives and not have a quick reaction to, geez, we have to make a decision, we've got to match some offer out there. So I do think this makes the most sense. I am a little bit concerned with our costs going into it because I think we have seen some reports on the cost of maintaining the existing building, and I think it would be helpful if Mr. McGovern would be willing to talk a little bit about the inspections that we've done and any potential costs in just maintaining it until some future development takes place.
Good evening, Mark McGovern, Director of Community Services. Today, we've worked with Malone and McBroom on studying the land, the grounds, those 58 acres. They completed a Phase 1 environmental review, a Phase 2 review, a property survey, a wetland study, and they've mapped the wetlands and flagged the wetlands, and also we studied the stormwater system. Good news is, in our Phase 2, where we did soil samples and in areas in which Yukon had done remediation in the past and pulled tanks and things, you know, all of that came back positive, and we didn't find any remnant contamination of any concern. That's all outside the buildings. So now we have to take a step to do something similar inside the buildings. And so what's contemplated is continuing with Malone and McBroom in the due diligence period that's, that's central to this purchase and sale agreement, to go in and study the buildings, to look at what the environmental conditions are in areas such as lead, PCPs, and asbestos, typical sort of things. We've done this, you know, the town's had to do this with Charter Oak School, so forth, get a handle on, on what the current state is. We'll also get more information from Yukon during the due diligence period about the buildings and the plans around them and so forth, and we'll be able to have a better picture of what the, what those buildings are like and what they're going to cost to maintain. And of course, that information goes into all the discussion about what's the, what's the use, what's the future use going to be? Because depending on what the future use could be would, could have an impact on what we might need to do in a building, whether or not we have to cling to one standard versus another depending on the use of a facility. So we're ready and positioned to hit the ground running with Malone and McBroom to begin that work as soon as possible. Going back more than a year now, our building official, our town engineer, our plant facilities director walked through the buildings. We'll be returning and doing the same thing and getting a good handle on the building systems and making an assessment from more of a sort of physical capacity.
And over the last few weeks, have you had any indications of interest from any developers? Because then, obviously, I think we want to get as many ideas out there as possible. So I'm taking this opportunity in case there's any developer listening, that we want to look at all possible.
Yeah, I have received a few calls and emails from, from real estate brokers and developers, in which I explained what the process was, and I said, stay tuned. Some of the interest was for housing, some was for assisted living. We're going to look at all those different things during the due diligence period to find out, based on what we learn about the buildings, what might be, you know, appropriate reuse or not.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Anyone else? Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. The resolution tonight, as I understand it, is to authorize the town manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement. And as Ms. Bonham mentioned, we have the purchase and sale agreement in front of us. It's stamped preliminary draft. So I just want to be clear that we're not voting tonight to authorize the execution of the agreement that we have in front of us, that in fact, we're authorizing the town manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement, whatever that final agreement is. And the reason I ask is I have comments on the agreement. I don't think it would be particularly helpful to go through them one by one in this forum, but I will circulate them to the council, town manager, and to corporation council as well. But, so I just want to make sure my understanding's correct, that we're just authorizing the town manager to go forward with a purchase and sale agreement.
The resolution states that town managers authorized to enter into a purchase and sale agreement.
Okay. All right, so I read that correctly. Okay. And so that means that the agreement we have in front of us is not the final version.
It is what we consider to be substantially the final agreement, but if obviously there are any questions or concerns, we would definitely want to hear that and, and take that into consideration, absolutely.
Very good. So I'll circulate the comments after the meeting tonight. With respect to the transaction itself, I look forward to a, you know, an open and full discussion about the possibilities of use for this property and to have, you know, the public have a voice in that discussion as well. As many of you know, during the process of having one potential purchaser for the property, not having fully vetted that opportunity or considered the impact that it would have on our community, I think at least some of us felt like it was, you know, it may not be in the best interest of the town. And so I'm happy that we are in a position to be able to, hopefully, based upon or following the due diligence and moving forward in this transaction, have an opportunity to take a timeout, so to speak, where we can actually consider what the options are for this parcel and have a kind of a formal or organized process around being able to listen to not only people in the community, but, but developers and others, to see what's in the best interest of the community. And hopefully, at the end, provide something that, to the folks in town, that, you know, is, you know, provides community enrichment for them, something that they will be able to enjoy in whatever form or fashion. So I look forward to, to that discussion, and I just want to note that with respect to the finances of the transaction, we have, we have the initial deposit and the second payment totaling $1 million. The $4 million isn't due until the closing in October of 2017. And with respect to any maintenance costs, the town doesn't have any until October of 2017. So it puts us in a position where we can all take a breath and think through the possible uses, and I think that is absolutely in the best interest of the town, so I'm very happy with the, with the outcome. Thank you.
Anyone further? Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you to all town staff to help make this possible, particularly Mr. Van Winkle, who is overseas in Great Britain, I might add. The timing is impeccable. But I would just like to follow what my colleagues have said tonight, you know, and reflect on the fact that, I think we all agree, we live in the best town, not only the state, but I think some would argue the country, and what a unique opportunity this is, that we have this massive parcel in our town that we have total control over at a price that we can all agree is favorable. And I just think it's important to reflect that as a body, that it really wasn't until we had the public engaged in the process that we got to this number in this favorable terms. And I think that that should really serve as a bellwether moving forward as to how we should proceed and approach this. And I think that we do, we will do that. Excuse me. So I look forward to seeing what we come up with, but it's just such a special opportunity and a unique one, and I think that whatever happens, this will be a legacy that's going to stay with the town forever, and it's going to be really important, and I'm excited, and I think it's going to be fun. So thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else? Mrs. Carrigan.
What would you say the value of the property is? Just... No, not the value, really the open market value. Certainly more than $5 million. Not really?
I'm not a licensed appraiser.
Oh, okay.
We did not, we didn't do, we didn't do an appraisal, so...
I would say it's certainly worth more than $5 million.
I believe the assessor probably would view it as more than $5 million.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to be on the record that I think we're getting a great deal of this property. With respect to how we got here, I think it's important that everyone recognized that there was no agreement, other than Yukon was selling this property to an organization. There was no agreements with respect to what was going to happen next. I just want to make sure there's no inferences made to the contrary. The town is always looking out for its residents in every respect, and I think the, the hearing that we had gave everyone an opportunity to, to talk about, you know, what we'd like to see. So I just think that the town handled this all very well, and I'm really proud of everyone that got involved. Worked out well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carrigan. Mrs. Casperson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I am concurring with the thanks to all of the town staff. Really greatly appreciate the relationship that we have with Yukon to help us come to a decision that we are able to afford and manage as a town in order to have the time to see what a great solution we can create with this, or to come up with some other buyers, but just the, you know, the opportunities at this point in time are endless, and we are always, as the minority leader stated, is we're always ready to find ways to bring in more revenue to the town in our tax base. So this is a great opportunity, and I am very pleased that we are able to move in this direction, to have the time to see what we can do with this jewel that's very close to my house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Casperson. Mr. Winograd.
Thank you. I wanted to echo what Councilwoman Carrigan stated about the process. I agree, it was a very good process. In fact, you know, when we first voted as a council, you know... In fact, you know, when we first voted as a council unanimously to ask the city manager to buy the property, to negotiate for a price, I actually made a joke that was, fell kind of a, with a bit of a thud, but I made the comment that I just asked him to go get a good deal. And it was about as funny then as it is now. But in fact, it, it was nice that it worked. I mean, so there's a, some national politicians like to take credit for every random statement they make that then ends up happening. So I'll try to avoid doing that. But I, but I do think that, you know, to some extent, that was in fact the plan. The plan was to do hard negotiating until we got an acceptable price both for the state and for the town. And I, I appreciate the comments from Attorney Orr, and I, and I wholeheartedly agree that our negotiators at every level of the town are excellent at their job, and the fact that they continued to work to get a deal that was mutually beneficial for the town as well as the state, it just, it deserved all the praise. So I, I do think it is a good deal for the state as well. I, I appreciate, you know, the, the advantage of having a definite buyer. And so, you know, I don't think this is a case of, of us winning a negotiation, but rather having two parties coming to a mutual agreement to the benefit of both. So I certainly praise our town. I think we did a great job. But again, praise the state for their reasonableness and, and frankly, for not chasing what might have been elusive pot of money that may, may not have ended up being there. So again, good job for the professionals on both sides. And in terms of the comments about the openness of our process, of course, this is going to be, this is West Hartford. We know this is going to be a very open process. We know we're going to get lots of commentary, and we're going to get a lot of great ideas. And everything will be considered, of course, and everyone will be heard, of course. And we will come up with something really great to take advantage of, as everybody's mentioned, this wonderful opportunity we have in the middle of our town. So thank you all for a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. Anyone else? Mr. Barnes for the second time.
Thank you for noting my speaking number. Yes, for the second time. I just want to comment, you know, the, kind of the, the history of where we've come from and, and where we've been, I, I just have to briefly take issue. I, I don't think the, it is, as my colleagues have stated, I think the, there was a, a plan, there was an intention to move forward with a particular purchaser without a lot of openness in the process. And I think we finally got to openness when we had a public hearing, when the folks in town became aware of what the proposal was and actually thought about the impact that it may have on our community. And it was only then that the light really was shined on that opportunity, and people came out to the tune of over 500 people on a Monday night in the auditorium to talk about their feelings about that. And so that's when it happened. I don't think the process was open previously. I'm looking forward to an open process now, and I'm happy we're in the position that we're in to be able to have the opportunity to do that. But I don't think, as has been stated, that, that has always been the way it's been handled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. I think like Ms. Casperson, I live literally within throwing distance of the campus, and I am very excited by the opportunity to control the use of this property and to come up with hopefully a creative use for it. It's a, I agree with everybody in their comments that this is a very special opportunity for the town. And on behalf of my neighbors especially, who do live in the neighborhood surrounding the campus, I know that everybody looks forward to engaging in that process and is very happy with the result that we've come to. And so I would like to thank Attorney Orr and also the town staff who worked very hard on this, and I think came up with a very equitable and a very good solution for this property. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Anyone further? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm a UConn trustee for the record. That's why I said, okay, not because I wanted to listen to you guys. Okay. Number 10, Mr. Davidoff. Number 10. I am asking for a motion to suspend Rule 43 of the Standing Rules in order to allow introduction and adoption of amendment to the rules at the, at the same meeting. And we do need a two-thirds vote. This is involving the rules change in the order of the town manager.
I move that we suspend Rule 43 of the Standing Rules.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And now we make a motion to.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the resolution revising the standing, standing rules of West Hartford Town Council for the 2015-2017 term.
Motion's been made in second. And I just wanted to mention why we are doing this before we take a vote. We have, oh geez, that's me. That's terrible. Sorry about that. Oh, my gosh. We are, are doing, we're, we're moving the town manager's comments because we have many, many applications that come before us, people from out of state, people from other towns, attorneys that are being hired and paid for by the applicant. And many, many of these projects were held up in the discussion on internal things that we, that we've been talking about at the table. And it made sense, we had actually, I had several comments from people that maybe this was a cumbersome process and maybe we could streamline it a little bit, and we talked about it and decided that this was probably the best way to go. We always want you to stay and find out what's going on in town, so you're encouraged to stay for the town manager's comments. But if you are from out of town and have to catch a plane or need to get, drive three hours to get home or whatever, you won't be tied to doing that as, as these, as these meetings go on. And, and we, and we do want to ask our town manager to elaborate on something, and we won't be holding other people up. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, Mr. Davidoff.
Item number 11, it's a resolution to appropriate state of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development brownfield grant. I move we adopt.
Motion's been made in second. And actually, I think Mr. McGovern was here. Can you come up and just speak to this and maybe touch on 12, too? And maybe you should read, I don't know if they're, I don't know if you know if they're, I know that they're related, but I don't know if they are, if you can talk to both of them, that would probably be helpful.
Hi. Mark McGovern, Director of Community Services. I'll do my best. This is an initiative being managed in the Department of Public Works. I think the difference between the two items is one authorizes a signature and the other appropriates funds related to it. My understanding is that this, these are grant funds that DPW applied for from the Department of Economic and Community Development, the state, to do a phase one and phase two study of the incinerator building on Brixton Street, a facility, in my understanding, that hasn't been utilized since 1974, I think, if I remember the background from John Phillips. This is an initiative, I think, that goes back probably over a year now in terms of identifying the opportunity and seeking the funds sort of in support of what DPW's look to do with their facilities to maximize, you know, the operational value of, of that land on Brixton Street. I think the funding is simply going to do the first two rounds of environmental review.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Anybody have any? Mrs. Hall.
I, I only wanted to bring this up because this is a $200,000 grant, and A, I think this is wonderful that Mr. Phillips has been diligent about tracking down this grant, and this is a, a big piece of property over there on Brixton Street, and certainly technology has changed. There's a lot of different things that we could be doing with, with it in regard to what happens down there at Public Works, and I think this is exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mr. Davidoff.
As the former Chair of Community Planning, we discussed this several months ago, and it really reflects the changes which are taking place in how we recycle our refuge and how we are more environmentally conscious. And what this may present for us, an opportunity to turn this brownfield into something where we're able to do something with our organic waste in the future. Incineration was a method of disposal many decades ago, and today's ways of operating with respect to refuge and, and waste are dramatically different, and the technology and the science of the whole thing has made this outdated incinerator building something that we can possibly use for other purposes, which will put our community at the forefront in, in terms of recycling and reusing and reducing waste. So I think Mr. Phillips should be commended for seeking out ways to accomplish that, and it shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody because that's something that he constantly seeks to do in his role as Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Anybody else? I, I, I will say, I'm sure we are going to hear from Mr. Phillips on this, and we'll hear more about it. He also mentioned that this could also be an income producer for the town, which is very exciting, but much more to follow. But thank you for pinch hitting and stepping in and filling us in. Thank you very much. Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, Ms. Eck, we have to.
Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development in order to undertake the municipal brownfield grant round eight. I move we adopt.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now we are down to manager's report, and this is going to be the new home for the manager's report. So you'll see how this flows now. Okay. So Chief Go.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight, and thank you to Mark McGovern. I was going to answer those questions, but he said it much, he was much more articulate than I could have ever been. So thank you very much. So I have a few things to report for the good of the town. Some of the stuff on here is, is very exciting. First off, we'll kick off with 2016. West Hartford's main library and the related branches were voted in Hartford Magazine's annual reader poll as the best in the area. They said abundant opportunities to explore, learn, and connect were among the reasons why our library stood out. So thanks to everybody who cast a vote, and congratulations to Martha Church and her staff for all that they do for that. Morley School had their annual backpack brigade. This is where they collect backpack and school supply, school supplies for low-income West Hartford students. They had that on June 7th, filled the carts with backpacks and trekked them the mile walk to Town Hall from Morley School and donated, what was it here, over 280 backpacks for over 650 low-income residents. So that was a great job there. Our pools are open. It's almost July, so that's good news. One o'clock, the pools open. Kennedy, Fernridge, Eisenhower, and Beetham Parks open daily. Now, the tax bills were mailed, sorry I have to report that, but tax bills were mailed by the Revenue Services Office on June 17th to 47,000 owners of vehicles in town. First installment of real estate tax were also mailed. Payment is due no later than August 1st. Also, June is dog license month, so the town clerk's office mailed postcard reminders to over 3,000 dog owners urging them to make, to make their pets legal, because we do have a number of pets that are not legal in town. So make your pets legal in town during the month of June. Dogs over six months of age must be registered and receive a dog tag annually. The number tag serves as an ID, which we need in the police department if your dog strays or wanders away to reconnect you with the animal. Annual cost for license is $19 and eight, for unaltered animals, and for spayed or neutered, $8. And that's my report.
Coming from the police chief, that's very powerful. I'm going to make sure.
Get your dogs a license, please.
And I will say, he looks very dapper in a suit. We usually see him in uniform, so that's very nice. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Winograd.
I have a question. How is speeding doing in town? Because that's one of your roles as town manager, is to remind us.
Sure. Town manager and police chief, yeah, both. So, so speeding, we could talk about this for a long time. So my, the number one complaint I receive as police chief from residents are speeding concerns, and I like to say that this is not just West Hartford, when I talk to chiefs from across the state and really from across the country. This is the number one complaint of residents. So we urge our, our residents to slow down. But what residents can do is if they're speeding in their neighborhood, contact the police department. You don't have to call the chief's office. You can call the police department, ask for the traffic division. We have Captain Jeff Rose, who oversees our traffic division. He'll talk to you about your complaint. He could speak with the traffic officer. We can come up with some remedies or initiatives for you, which is usually enforcement on your road. So we'll send officers out to the neighborhood to conduct enforcement details. We'll try to figure out the times those are occurring and take enforcement action. We also have, Community Services has speed enforcement signs. Now, they have a lot of requests for those signs, but we can put them up throughout town, we can put them in your neighborhood for a brief period of time. They'll record speeds. They'll just give us information as what the high speeds are, what the low speeds are, what the average speeds are in the neighborhood. We, we put them there for a brief period of time, though, because a lot of times they become noise after a while. The residents, you know, what we find is, and Mr. McGovern can correct me if I'm wrong, hopefully not in front of all of you, but later, what we normally find is that for the first week or two, they're effective and they'll really bring the speeds down, but then again, people become used to them, so the speeds will start to pick up a little bit. So you need a few things. You need to call the police department, you need enforcement, we need to educate the public, and we need the engineering department to help us with the speed signs.
Thank you. Chief Go, Mrs. Hall.
Actually, it's not so much a question as I would have asked Ron to do this, but you may not, so I don't want to put you on the spot. But since people do have their tax bills now, I just want to remind everyone that the town gets their information on their automobiles from the state DMV. The state DMV sent out thousands of incorrect information, and so it's very important that everyone check their tax bill to make sure that they have the right information on it. And if they did not get one and they have a car, they are still responsible for paying that tax. So, and I believe the, go ahead, you.
No, so what I was going to say is, so that if you saw the news, the DMV had some computer errors, they sent out these improper statements. So check your bill, see what town it comes back to. If you have an issue, you call the assessor of the town that it improperly registered in. I had this a year ago with my town, said my car was registered in Windsor Locks, it was not. So I called the Windsor Locks assessor and had that information forwarded to my hometown, which they'll take care of and make sure you pay the bill in your hometown. So it's as simple as that. But you won't want to call the West Hartford assessor, you'll want to call the assessor for the town where the bill went to, let them know there was a mistake. When you call that number, have your registration with you, because they're going to need your name, your address, your vehicle plate number, but also your vehicle identification number, which is that 17 alphanumeric character, they're going to need that. So have all that ready for them, and they can make that adjustment quite easily over the phone.
World of knowledge. Okay. Mr. Lawrence, did you have something?
Sure. Yes. Wearing your police chief hat, we have some promotions tomorrow. I thought you'd like to take the opportunity to announce those two promotions.
We do. So about a month ago, one of our lieutenants, Ted Stoner, retired, went off to greener pastures. So we have an opportunity, whenever we have somebody at the supervisory ranks who retires, we have the opportunity to make promotions. So we'll be promoting Sergeant Eric Rushlow to the position of lieutenant. Eric has been with us for 18 years. He has a highly commended officer. He's served in a variety of different capacities. He's currently a detective sergeant. He'll be promoted to lieutenant and overseeing our community relations division. And we have an officer, Kerry Kluki, who'll be promoted to sergeant. Now, what's interesting about Kerry is he has 26 years of police experience. He served 10 and a half years within the Britain Police Department. After 10 years, decided to join West Hartford. So when he came to us, he wasn't your typical rookie officer. He had quite a bit of experience. He's been with us since 2001. So all told, he has about 26 years of police experience. He's served in a variety of capacities, best known for his traffic enforcement, speaking of traffic. But he does a great job with that, and he'll be promoted to sergeant. Ceremony is 8:15 tomorrow morning at the police department. The public is always welcome to come. We, we set the time early, so our midnight shift and our day shift can be there, and the families of the officers can stop in before work. So no, it's not a great time for the. So, I know it's not a great time for the public, but if you're available, 8:15, we'll have our ceremony in the training division in the police department.
Thank you, Chief Go. We congratulate them. They do incredible work. It's nice to see them being rewarded, too, for this. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. I have... So, now, Miss Number 18. I have a few announcements. A chorus line, June 15th to June 31st at Playhouse on Park, and it had got great review. It received great reviews in the New York Times. Shakespeare Under the Stars, July 14th to 31st at the University of St. Joseph's. Othello is the play that will run for three weekends. Thursday in July at 6:00 PM in the front lawn of the First Church of Christ, 12 North Main Street. Bring a chair and blanket to enjoy the Carolan Concert Series. Blood Drive, in honor of Conrad student Seamus Turco, Tuesday, July 5th. Seamus Turco is an 18-year-old West Hartford resident who has been treated for lymphoblastic lymphoma, a blood cancer, since December 2014. Seamus has received multiple blood transfusions as part of his treatment plan. He is doing well, but has 10 more months of chemotherapy. Seamus's twin brother, Gabe, and their close friends, Abby and Kate Goslin, are hosting a blood drive in honor of Seamus for the American Red Cross on Tuesday, July 5th, the Town Hall. Schedule a call, 1-800-RED-CROSS, 1-800-7332767 to make an appointment. And this is our own Director of Human and Leisure Services's son, and they are always in our thoughts and prayers. Red Dress Run for Women, presented by United Healthcare, will be held Saturday, July 9th, 2016. 5K Run Walk exclusively for women of all ages and abilities to celebrate women's fitness. Start time is kids, 8:00 and adults, 8:30. The 3.1-mile route starts and finishes at Elizabeth Park. That's a great run. Yoga on La Salle Road, Saturday, July 23rd, 8:00 AM. Bring your yoga mat. Enjoy hundreds of yoga enthusiasts for a free 75-minute outdoor yoga class on La Salle Road and West Hartford Center on Saturday, July 23rd, 8:00 to 9:15. All level classes will take over a full city block. It's the largest yoga event in greater Hartford. Rain date is July 30th, 2016. It says 2015, sorry. Parking is available in the municipal lots. Anybody have any other announcements? Mr. Davidoff?
Yes. This past Sunday, I was contacted to fill in for the Italian ambassador for the Concorsio Ferrari event, which benefits Connecticut Children Medical Center. And they have these Ferraris and Maseratis and Alfa Romeos. Go down to the medical center and pick up 40 children, and they get a ride from there to La Salle Road. And they're presented with this medallion, which makes them an honorary Italian. So, I got to present this 40 times to the children, and they got to meet Jonathan the Husky Dog, as well as Ms. Connecticut. It was very well attended. The weather was perfect. But what it did for me was put in perspective how fortunate I am that my children are healthy, and there's others in our community whose children aren't so fortunate. And it was a 90-degree day, and the only request they had of me was to make certain that I wore a wool suit and looked very diplomatic. And I did that, so only Jonathan the Husky Dog and I were fully clothed in quite warm clothing. But in retrospect, and just thinking about this for the past two days now, it's probably one of the nicest things that I was able to participate in in my life, to see people who are struggling with health conditions and just taking out that little five minutes to make these children so happy. It was well worth it. So, kudos to our community for hosting it. The organizers said that they consider our center the perfect location for this event. And thank you to them and to all the residents and those from other communities who came and supported this great and worthy cause. Thank you.
Bueno. My son was actually a recipient of one of the rides as a patient, a cardiac patient. So, it's a remarkable event. Adrian Giordano lives in town and works, and she's a big foundation person that helps to support this event. So, it's a wonderful, wonderful event. Yes. Ms. Casperson?
Thank you, Mayor Cantor. So, around West Hartford, of course, there are many wonderful things to do. Tomorrow, the 28th of June, starts the concert series in Elizabeth Park. There are other events in Blueback Square. There are some concerts also at the University of St. Joseph campus this summer. They're free and great places to bring your family or a picnic and great friends. So, do check them out on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Casperson. Mr. Warrick?
And we get kind of used to these awards for our town, but the announcement yesterday of being the 25th safest cities to raise a child by some, probably looking at the website now, the FBI, somebody, safest cities. Somebody said it, and...
So, it was an organization called Safe Wide. It has to do with home safety and security. They looked at residents throughout the communities, throughout the country. They had to have over 10,000 population. But they looked at your crime rates. They looked at your sex offender registry. They looked at your graduation rates. They looked at the community outreach programs of your police department. And West Hartford came in of 30 communities, number 25 in the country, which was good for us. They noted not only our community outreach programs in the police department, but I hate to toot my own bell here. I feel like I can't hear just to talk about how great the police department is. But they also complimented our Behind the Badge Citizen and College Police Academy as well. So, it was good for the town and good for the department.
So, congratulations to the department and...
Thank you.
Congratulations. It's all the play, right? Anything else? All right. Number 19, reports from Corporation Council.
Well, I must say, the chief makes a great town manager, but an even better police chief. So...
The teacher are ready, safer.
But we don't need executive session, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything for Mr. O'Brien? No? Okay. Number 20, Mr. Davidoff, make appointments.
I move we appoint the following individuals to these respective boards for the term ending in the resolution. Appoint James Huey to the Board of Assessors for a term ending 12/31/2021. Appoint Shawna Kitzman to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending 12/31/2019. Appoint Kimberly Parsons Whitaker from alternate to regular member of the Design Review Advisory Committee for a term ending 12/31/2009. Appoint Raymond Giolito as alternate to Design Review Advisory Committee for a term ending 12/31/2018.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your service. And let's see. Number 29, Mr. Davidoff.
Number 28.
28. Sorry. I'm... Sorry. Number 28.
I move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 29.
Number 29. I move that we receive the notice of the town planner's intention to approve pursuant to Section 177, 44(c)(9(b), a request on behalf of the American School for the Deaf, seeking approval for revision to Special Development District Number 141 located at 137 North Main Street. The request is for minor modifications to the landscape plantings, landscape walls, and minor site grading. All of the changes are in the immediate vicinity of the existing central entrance area landscaping and signage.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Do you have...
I just had a question.
Okay. On this? Okay. Mrs. Hall? That's the next one, right?
Next one.
Okay. Number 30, Mr. Davidoff.
Item number 30. I make a motion that we receive the notice of the town planner's intention to approve pursuant to Section 177, 44(c)(9(b)(cd), a request from Attorney Robin Pearson on behalf of Delmar West Hartford LLC. Delmar, seeking approval for revisions to Special Development District Plan 140 located at 1 Memorial Road, formerly known as 90 Raymond Road. The request is for minor architectural modifications, primarily facade detail material alterations, minor adjustments to the required parking, a slight increase in total number spaces, and minor adjustments to exterior hardscape elements and landscape elements.
Motion's been made in seconded. Ms. Hall, you had a question?
I did. I was just wondering. There had been a lot of discussion on the pace of development at the hotel, so I didn't know whether...
We happen to have our Director of Community Planning here to address that.
Since we're talking about it, whether we have any update on whether any of these changes are slowing things down or whether everything's moving as planned.
Things are moving, but we are at a point where they're about to finish the work under their existing building permits. We've been working with them for a little bit of time now on these revisions that are deemed to be minor and eligible for administrative amendments. Action by the council would have to be taken in order for us to complete our review and give approvals on the next round of building permits. So, we feel like we're at a stage now where construction should ramp up considerably in the next few weeks.
Okay. And any projection on completion?
The projection is still spring of 2017.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Anybody else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have no petitions, no executive session. Number 33, Mr. Davidoff.
I move we adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn.